There we go.
Those were the Tennessee containers. Back when they would drink, they'd go to Tanger about Dallas and that was.
Yeah.
They were on every chain. I can't. And I do this.
But your body.
Sound. Sounds like you're forced to.
Yeah, there you are.
There we go. A while there, isn't it?
Yeah, you're pretty loud. Hold on one second.
So if you might want to mute the computer.
Do you want to do a screen? Maybe turn on the TV?
Oh, that's good.
Is that echo gone now at all?
It's always.
No, I can't.
Now we can't.
We'll get it.
Trial and error.
I don't really know if you did.
Okay, can you say something?
Test, test.
Okay, I think you're just gonna have to deal with the echo. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I've made it through worse.
It is 5:50. We will call to order the Tourism and Marketing Committee meeting for the purpose of discussing CDOS Destination Operating System.
Uh, yes, so this is something that the Tennessee Department of Tourist Development uses. It's an operating system that's gonna allow us to garner data on the type of visitors that are coming here. And therefore, really plug it into all the initiatives that we have lined out in the next fiscal year. I have Adam Zapaya. He's the Sales Director for Zartico on Zoom here. He's the one that I'm working with on this contract, and I'm just gonna let him articulate for a few minutes to you what this system is and why it's important to our efforts here.
Awesome. And I usually make some type of a crack about not being able to see people's faces, but I understand it's unavoidable right now. So I appreciate your time. I apologize. I will silence my phone here. I'm gonna go through. This will be pretty quick. I've got kind of an abridged version that we do of a deck that we usually take roughly an hour to go through. We are a data science company based out of Salt Lake City. Shocking. This is what you see here for an analysis we did for the state of Utah. We've worked with over 300 DMOS of all sizes. I like to say that our smallest county that we work with is Cleveland County, North Carolina, which has a team of two all the way up to your tier-one cities. And we work specifically, as well as, as Jordan mentioned, the state of Tennessee. And Josh Gibson is the Research Director there, and the list Commissioner Ezeo used our information, our data, our operating system, to help fight for funds to keep promoting Tennessee as a premier destination for people to come and vacation, spend their dollars. I'm gonna go through a couple of things, and then I really wanna focus in on a little bit of a very broad, strict view of how we do what we do. And then how Jordan is going to leverage that data and how we've given her access to it. We, at Zartico, we really don't believe in kind of the single silver bullet data sets that can define your visitor economy. When we talk about what we do, we really wanna focus on attracting quality visitors to the destination. When we say quality visitors, we need people that are going to leave dollars behind in the community. Tax revenue for your constituents who are there in the community and what that does downstream. So the way that we do that is we bring in a couple of different data sets. We bring in geolocation data sets, which is mobile application data on everyone's phone when you download an app and ask you three questions. And everyone there can probably say what those are, which is, do you wanna allow your location to be used always, never, or while using the application? So it is, we don't know anything about the person other than that their, that application's being allowed to have their location shared. And so we know where that device is and where it typically stays. So we bring in geolocation data. We also bring in credit card spend data. And credit card spend data is important because it helps to show the yield, to understand are consumers from Chattanooga more valuable? Are they spending more money at accommodations, at local attractions, at locally owned businesses than people from, say, Knoxville or from the metro Atlanta area? And why that's important to Jordan, something that is attractive for her to this and where a lot of our folks use it, is those are the type of people that you want in your community. You want people that are spending money, that are leaving dollars behind, that are supporting these locally owned businesses. So the credit card data that we give represents roughly 25% of the market credit card suite. That's all four major brands of credit cards, Visa, Mastercard, Discover, and Amex. And then we bring that data set in with our third data set, which is Logic. And that's both short-term vacation rental as well as hotel data to help tell a story. If there's any, if there's any sports fans in the room, I like to look at this integrated data model, which is where we bring everything in. And, you know, this right here as instant replay, right? So when instant replay was introduced into sports, they don't just give you one camera angle to determine if the player got the line to gain or if the runner beat the play at first. If you've watched them, they give you multiple camera angles to help tell a story. And that's what these data sets are. There's multiple camera angles to help Jordan and her team, or Jordan to identify these quality visits. So what this does is it provides context, right? So it's both real-time and disposable data on visitor behavior, right? So that's travel patterns to support really smarter, more targeted decision-making when it comes to the limited marketing funds that are being placed. So you're no longer using a shotgun to place your marketing efforts. You're using a rifle. Does that make sense? I'm just gonna assume everyone's nodding their head because.
They're not in. I'm not in.
Okay, perfect. And I need to know if this is landing or if everyone's asleep yet. Because I understand this can, this can be a lot of times. But, so we bring in the data sets, right, the raw data that we bring in. We have a data science team that cleans the data, and then within about seven days, we have everything within what's called the ZDOS, or the Zartico Destination Operating System. And it's all cleaned through the integrated data model. And Jordan, just stop me. I know we're, we're short on time.
Yeah, because they do need to vote. And I just wanna throw in really quick, this is a sole source, so we didn't have to go to bid for this. This is a sole source tool. I don't know if you wanna speak to that really briefly and then maybe just touch on really quick the co-op.
We have a sole source. There's really no one else that does what we do, that brings these things in. So like, you know, this is really gonna help with some of the strategic initiatives that Jordan has outlined. I'm not gonna go through this, just given their time. We will upload some AI briefings that is kind of a monthly recap of what's going on in the destination. Where are your visitors coming from? Where are they spending the most money? Is that up or down compared to year over year? And the way we're able to say that is that we get historical data going all the way back to January 1st, 2021. So we can understand year over year. This is gonna help with some for branding, identify and target these high-value audiences. This is gonna help really fine-tune some of the website SEO messaging that goes out, as well as from an advertising and a marketing standpoint. I have an agency background, and I would have killed to have this data back when I was newer in my career. So it'll help really measure the impact of media campaigns that allow Jordan to evaluate and adjust marketing, not in a retroactive way like we've typically done. And again, this aligns specifically, it's the exact same type of system that the Tennessee Department of Tourism and Development, the TDTD, uses. So I know we got started a little late, and I know I just threw a ton of it all. But there, what questions do you have? We work with, I think, 11 DMOS there in the state of Tennessee currently. I wanna be respectful of time.
It's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, and the state, because they find this to be such an important asset to DMOS, they are bringing a match to the table. So annually, this would be a $35,000 value out of the tourism fund. We're only gonna have $21,750 coming out of it. That money will easily be returned.
That was a prerequisite of Commissioner Ezeo when we began negotiating. He wanted something for some of the counties that may not have the funds available, so they did this matching program.
This will be integrated into every single project that we launch over the next two years. It'll be foundational to the decisions we make in the strategic planning, the marketing, the rebranding, the website, every single aspect of it.
Absolutely. It'll, it'll be the benchmark, to be completely honest, of where the information is. Any questions from anyone? Is there, is there any aha moments or the things that you have questions about? Awesome. And the final thing that we are delivering is cross- visitation on demand. So we wanna see what cross- visitation within the destination looks like from one place of interest to the other. We can visualize that and help understand, give some context to what's going on. That's just something that we're rolling out later this summer.
In a sense, it's just fantastic. Need it.
Yes. And I didn't even prepare to say that.
I'll entertain a motion to recommend this to the full board.
Any questions? Is there anything I can have help clarify? Did any of that just not land? I'd love to help understand there.
I think we're good. Ryle, you're gonna motion to put it to the full board? Okay, great.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Motion to second. Questions or discussion? Bring that all in favor. All right, motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Adam. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Everyone have a great evening. Thank you.
Anything else to come for Tourism and Marketing? Not withstand adjournments.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. Go ahead. So who will see this information? Is this going to Nolan? Is this coming to us?
Yeah.
You, or who's gonna?
So I'll have the dashboard. I believe that we can have up to three users on it. So I assume Nolan will have a dashboard, and then whoever, you know, a second person comes to my team or whoever else that, if we wanna save that third one. But there'll be quarterly meetings where they send me reports and go over that data with me too, because it does take a while to become literate on being able to read this. Like, there are people that they spend 50 hours a week reading this, you know, to know it backwards and forward. So it'll be available to me, but it will take a time for me to become literate on it. So I will rely on this article team, as well as professionals that I'm working with from a marketing standpoint, to help me really understand that data and use it appropriately in our campaigns and SEO, et cetera. It's a pretty robust offering, and it is something, when we purchase that, I can run reports and give it to the chamber. I can run reports and create presentations to provide to our stakeholders. I can, you know, go to the county commission and say, look at, this is the, this is the facts on what we're doing and the progress we're making. So this isn't something that I just need to keep on my desk quiet to myself. We share it with everybody.
Thanks.
Tourism and Marketing, stand adjourned.
Okay, it's 6 o'clock, and we have a joint Parks and Recreation and Gilding and Grounds Committee meeting to discuss Hive Paddle Sport Self-Rental Kiosk.
It's me.
It's you.
I'm just gonna talk to you all for the next 20 minutes.
Okay.
So this is a really exciting thing that's coming to McMinnville. It's all thanks to some relationships that Justin Scott had within TWRA was the basis of this. This is brand new. This is gonna be the first placement of this ever. So they are trying to work with Tennessee State Parks as well to put one in, one of the Tennessee State Parks. But we are the first official Hive Paddle Sport self-rental kiosk. So the placement, what we'd like to see is around Riverfront. We had that group that owns this company come down. We looked it over. We've done a lot of research on floodplains, data poles, where this would work, et cetera, et cetera. And what it's gonna look like is, and I put some pictures in the packet, but it's essentially gonna look like a honeycomb. The doors are gonna be locked with Bluetooth technology, so it will require that you provide your credit card, your ID, sign a liability waiver, sign off that you've read terms and safety precautions as far as this before that door will even unlock. So it's an hourly rental. It's app-based, so if you're out on the water, you hit your hour mark, decide you still wanna go out, you can just go on the app, add another two hours. There's gonna be four single kayaks, two tandem kayaks, and two paddle boards initially with the opportunity to grow those. I have to say, I'm so impressed with this company. Their founding company is actually something called BoardSafe Docs. They're all across the United States, major, major projects with major, major companies, and this is a new development that they have within that broader scope. So these people know what they're doing. They're working with Tennessee State lawyers to ensure that their liability waivers, contracts, everything like that is approved within Tennessee state law. We have a hold harmless with them that they've agreed to sign. We're listed on their insurance policy for a million dollars. Again, that contract and liability will all be in place to ensure that there's no liability on the part of the city at all. There's no financial cost to this whatsoever because it's been kind of trial and error. They want us to work through a lot of the logistics of broad placement with them. They're placing this free of charge for us for a year. They'll be doing all the customer service. There's a phone number gonna be posted there, so there will be no burden whatsoever on the city, no liability. It's kind of a unicorn type of thing.
So it would stay, everyone would have to stay above the dam. You wouldn't go below the dam?
Yeah, so we're, I mean.
Because that's kind of.
What did we talk about as far as signage and trying to get them to go?
Yeah, so I, the reason we chose Riverfront Park is because the water is still up there. And the key was that they rent it, they could paddle upstream, fish, you know, get whatever, and then come back to that same location. That was kind of the idea of it versus if they put in below the dam, then you gotta take out somewhere else, then you gotta get the kayak back. So we were, we were trying to focus on the waterway above the dam.
And that way we don't compete with Smooth Rapids.
And I, and I did, I did go speak to Jimmy Barker directly and talk to him about that. We feel that this will be an opportunity for those that are just beginners and they wanna get on the water and wanna try it out. I think it could be a great thing for Smooth Rapids because those people may say, hey, I wanna, I wanna do a longer float. I wanna do a guided float now, and they go to Smooth Rapids and join them, so.
So how do you move that honeycomb? I mean, if it starts to flood, how do we get, what do we do with that? Because that goes under.
Yeah, so we had talked about, we'll have to take forks and pick that thing up and potentially move it up on the hillside. And we will store it. After the kayaking season is over, we'll move it. So it just doesn't sit down there all season, all year.
So, so when we, you know, we're gonna be getting a lot of rain, that's when you would go and you would make it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And just keep it up there until, you know, the flood spring. Where's it gonna, where, do you have a place for it to sit?
It's gonna sit right next to the water. So we've got our boat ramp, and they want it, they want us to put a nice gravel, three-inch.
Yeah, three-quarter inch.
Three-quarter inch gravel. And it's gonna sit right next to the boat ramp. The idea was that you could, you could get your kayak and immediately go straight to the water. I had initially said, why don't we put it up on the hill somewhere, again, out of the floodplain? But then they were like, who wants to grab their kayak and carry it down the hill, right? So it's gonna be right on the water, right there by the boat ramp.
Well, we had paddle boats there and canoes.
Correct.
Out of a long time ago. It was really successful.
Yeah.
This just provides additional access to our waterways in a less structured manner, which a lot of people are looking for. So it's just a really exciting opportunity, and especially to be the first. They're gonna do a lot of promotion and marketing for us. They're gonna come here with drones, and they wanna have a big launch party, and they're gonna push it out kind of at a national level. So this is also in partnership and strengthens our relationship with TWRA since that was the basis of this. So all around, it's just really fantastic, and they are doing, they are making sure every T is crossed and I is dotted that we have no liability or financial burden on this.
Do we get a portion of any of the rental money?
So there's an opportunity for that down the road if we were to buy into this. However, there are some liability concerns within that that we'll have to really look at prior to purchasing into that. But if we were to purchase in, purchase it, we can split it with, the revenues with them 50/50. They give 50% for the customer service side of it. But again, we just, after talking with public entity partners, that was something they just weren't quite sold on yet because if we are owners of it, there's. because if we are owners of it, there's a lot more liability involved.
Beauty is, I have guys down there seven days a week, so we lay eyes on it. We essentially just need to look at it and make sure that it's there and it's operable. You know, we're not really doing anything to it. They'll maintain it, as Jordan said. We're just, we're down there every day, so.
Yeah, and probably work with, with a kayaking professional to go down and occasionally check the vessels and the safety gear themselves to ensure that they're in the shape that remain, that keeps us safe environment. So that was something initially we thought the city could do, but then again, based on liability concerns, we backed away from those safety checks and asked them to find a third party to conduct those.
Is there an estimated time?
Yeah, so the placement is scheduled for July 11th. So anyone that wants to come down and have a kayak party at Riverfront Park on July 11th, you are invited.
What time?
That's a great question. I will text you.
Okay. I think it sounds like a great idea.
It's super fun, and when you see it too, it's just, it's special. It really is special.
I think paddle boarding, I think that's a great spot for that in particular. Like, the kayaking, obviously, you could do it in various places, but for paddle boards, that's the perfect area.
Yeah, agreed. And I found out yesterday that TWRA does have low-head dam signage, so I think I'm gonna reach out to them and ask them to place one of those, so people see that if they do happen to paddle in that direction.
That's a good idea. And maybe ask them to put a warning, like, when they go to rent it. So whether there's a kiosk, is it, is there a screen that you can see, or is it just on your phone?
It's, it's the app on the phone.
Just the app?
Yeah.
Maybe ask them if they could put a warning.
I, they are working with the Director of American Canoe Association and multiple other safety entities, so they're, they're putting a lot of safeguards in place. Like, the thing's so clever is they're putting QR codes on the kayak. So if a kayak randomly shows up somewhere, you can scan it. They can see who the last participant was in that. So if a search needs to pursue, they can kind of determine who that person is, where they were. So they're, they're really going above and beyond and being incredibly clever in this. I will bring that up to them. I'm not gonna be shocked if they already have it in there.
That's great, but I would like just to...
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make a motion for it.
I'll second. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay, we are a little late, but I will call to order the Building and Grounds Committee meeting. That was scheduled for 6:05. This is for a, am I saying this right, Levitt Amp Music Fall Concert Series?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is actually Jennifer's initiative. The city is just partnering with her, so. Do you have it?
I emailed it to this email.
Oh, okay.
Of course, it's not there.
Okay, well, while Nolan's doing that, he's gonna pull up a short video that will actually just, it's just a good little, like, less than one minute to kind of give you a little idea about it. But when I went to National Conference in Philadelphia this year, there is, yeah, it's gonna be right here.
This one?
No, let's see.
It looks fun, whatever it is.
It's... Maybe, what is that one? I don't know. So I will say, my home community in Wisconsin has had this for the last 12 years. I think they're the smallest city in the nation to have had it. It is such an incredible experience. It just makes the downtown so vibrant and welcoming and brings the community together. It's incredible. Probably under the Levitt, one of the applications. So anyway, Levitt Foundation works along. They actually have a contract with, with Main Street America and also with Tennessee. So the Tennessee Intermodal Commission and also Levitt have gone together, and we actually, there's a national grant for this music series to activate underused public space in your towns. Now, Tennessee has a really, a really cool little, what am I trying to say? Like, a really cool little wave this year. They're selecting six Tennessee communities, and we only actually are competing against other Tennessee communities. So as of two weeks ago, there was only 30 communities that had applied, and so we really want to be able to apply too. So Levitt's goal of what is very much like, you know, let's amplify community pride, let's help, you know, use underused public spaces, let's enrich lives through music, let's bring a bunch of cultures together, and do things like that. And they've been very successful. Like she said, she had one back in her hometown, so that's kind of been fun. So what they would do is that we, Main Street is applying for it with the city. It's a partnership. It's a match, the dollar-for-dollar match, but we'd be applying for seven concerts, for seven free concerts, that we would like to kind of see as an extension of Main Street Live, but in the fall. And we're actually thinking about offering it. Our application talks about it like a Thursday night, so we wouldn't be competing on Friday Night Football or Saturday College Football, but try to also activate our downtown on a different night. And we would really like to try to have it maybe on the lot. So with that, it would be, you know, there would be a little bit of some things that we've already talked to, talked to Justin about it and talked to my plane and stuff about it, because we might have to close a little bit of South Court Square down for like after 5:00, just to try to use the lot, and maybe close like a lane of traffic on Main Street just to slow traffic down if we were to have this. Now, this application, we'll turn it in, and then we will find out. It's due the 30th. We're notified if we're selected in August, and then it's a public voting thing. So then we have to get our community involved. So if we want this and we want $28,000 to $40,000 a year for the next three years to pay for this music series, then we have to like actually vote for it. And she was saying back in her hometown too, they had to get on and vote like crazy. So it does have a lot of community. You have to come together to try to make it happen and stuff like that. I just kind of hope that it'll be really cool to have, maybe on this end, to try to bring extra life to East Maine, especially after Main Street Live is over. Everybody always begs us to have more music and stuff downtown. I think with y'all's hopefully future plans for the lot, this could be really good, especially to have like a big national foundation to come help us do this. I think they do provide, we do kind of have to show that we have a music series that's successful, that you can handle it, and so that's why, that's part of what Main Street has done for so many years. That's part of a compelling part of our application. But then also you have, they would also provide some extra additional training. And I think a lot of theirs is very also, I guess, culture-focused, right? It is. They wanted, they want to see diversity and multiple different groups that are present in your community represented through the programming. Yeah, so we were thinking, like, of course, I've talked about, like, in our application, groups like Entice, or which is, you know, Soulful and stuff like that, or different, just some different, I can't remember everything, even Bluegrass. But I mean, just pulling some different music in that maybe we don't always have at Main Street Live.
We talked about gospel.
But I've got gospel or Christian, or, I mean, some different things like that. So, anyway. And the reason it's in front of you, because there is an in-kind match, so if, if we request $28,000, we need to have at least 50% of that in in-kind or donations. And so the city is wanting to partner on this and provide services out of multiple departments as an in-kind match. So that would be rental of the lot. It'd be Justin's team setting up the stage and taking it down, Frank's team handling garbage, Mike's team working with us as far as safety, security, lane closures. And so there's just a lot of elements that the city would work with her in partnership with as far as an in-kind sponsorship of the event. That's it. There, that's fine. So we have the application completed. It's in your packets as well.
So to clarify, you have to submit it by the 30th of this month. They let you know the winner in August of this year.
In August, and then if you, are we selected in August, then the open public voting is in September.
Okay.
But then you don't get it till 2026.
Okay.
And then you actually get it for three years.
So it'll be 26 to 28?
27, 28, yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve this. I think it sounds great.
Yeah, I second that. I'll make a motion, well, I mean, all in favor, thank you.
All in favor.
Thank you.
And I will call, stand adjourned.
We're a little bit late on the public hearings. We have four to hear before 7:00 PM. The first one is a public hearing to hear comments concerning the budget amendment of ordinance number 2025-10. That includes the fire truck. If anyone wishes to make comments and be heard regarding the budget for this next year, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. Hearing no comments regarding the budget, we will consider that public hearing closed. The next public hearing is a hearing to hear comments for the rezoning of a property on Clark Boulevard from R1 to R2. If anyone wishes to be heard regarding rezoning of Clark Boulevard property, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Shawn is the owner of this property. Did she wish to have that withdrawn?
She did have it withdrawn, and I was gonna bring that up when I came upon the agenda. So they did reach out today to withdraw that application.
So on the actual agenda for tonight, we just need the next item 10D?
Yeah, that one to be withdrawn.
All right. There will be, I guess, no comments to be heard regarding that rezoning. The next two are at 6:30 and 6:45, so we'll have to wait for those times respectively. It is 6:30. We will open a public hearing to hear comments regarding the rezoning of a property on Belmont Drive from I-1 Light Industrial to R3 High Density. If anyone wishes to address the board regarding this public hearing, come on up. If anyone wishes to address the board regarding this public hearing, come on up.
I'm Kenny Knight. I actually live at 188 Hillside Lane. And the map you sent me in the mail shows that this rezoning would be directly behind my house and also connecting to Kids of the Community. Some things that bother me about this rezoning, the lot beside my house that connects to this is listed as swampland. It's really wet, it stays wet, okay? Do you have this map that you could pull up on the screen? It might be easier if I could, if I could show you. That's not it. Hang on a minute.
I don't think we have one.
Okay, I can describe it to you. Okay, so, if you know where Cadillac Lane is, Hillside Lane connects to Cadillac Lane, comes around a sharp curve and goes up to Red Road where Paris Electric used to be. Okay, so I live in the bottom of that hill in the curve. And rainwater comes down both hills and floods out my yard and my one acre lot beside it. Okay, so I've had to, because the water runs off in my yard, the city would not fix my water problem, so to speak. So I had to hire USS to come and, and put a sump pump in and fix my water issues. But it still floods every time, almost every time it rains like we've been having. Okay, so from the Paris Electric side coming down the hill, all that water runs off into that one acre lot which runs into this property you're wanting to rezone. So it's, it's all swampland. As far as rezoning that, I'm really worried about having properties built back in that area. Number one, I guess I'm a little bit selfish, I don't want houses built in my backyard, houses, apartments, or whatever it's going to be. I don't totally understand what the residential three is. It says high density, is that going to be houses, is it going to be apartments, trailer park? The letter I received in the mail is very vague. But I will say this, all that is swampland, and it backs up. Okay, I can show you right here. Yeah, okay. I can't show you on both of them. That house right there in the corner of Hillside Lane is my house. Okay, Kids of the Community is right there. Okay, all that property you're wanting to rezone is swampland. If you go over there right now, you probably have water up to your knees. And all that runs over into my yard. It comes down both of those hills into that curve, runs off into my yard. If you can see right there, that picture's probably water. It looks like water. It's a very old picture. But you would have to do a lot of work to rezone this. And my question is, if you're going to rezone it to put houses there, why couldn't the city fix my water problem?
So I will tell you all, I'm on the planning commission. And it was recommended by the planning commission that we deny this application anyways.
Yeah.
So I'm going to...
Brilliant. Okay, good.
Yeah, I thought I might save you some time.
I didn't know that.
I didn't know what your position was at first, I wanted to let you speak.
I have a very strong position on this. It's denied.
Shaun, what are they wanting to do with it? I mean, I know it's going in as R3, but what is the developer...
The original plan, based on the discussion with them, was going to be for apartments. They were planning through a grant for the state for workforce housing, and that was. And so as Kara said, she's, the planning commission didn't make a recommendation for it now. It'll come up to vote, but on that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my stance. If, if it's going to be residential apartments and stuff, I do have a concern with it being in Kids of the Community's backyard, my backyard, and how much work the city would have to do to fix that swampland. And if they're going to fix that swampland, would they fix my swampland?
Well, the city wouldn't be fixing any of it. I mean, we don't go onto private property and, and do work.
Oh, well, okay.
It would be up to the developer, and there, it would be up to them if that were going to be rezoned, which it doesn't sound like it will be. They would have to do storm water mitigation and stuff like that as they would be building, but, yeah.
Well, if it's going to be denied, then good.
Thank you, sir.
That is my stance. Thank you.
I mean, they still have to have...
Yeah, and you, and you look at the others.
Hi. If, I was looking at it, and it's a lot of instructions to do. So I was looking, there is a lot of trees. So when you mentioned that it was going to be residential apartments, in my opinion, I think that's a lot, just because I understand you guys want to expand McMenville, and it's a very smart, small town in the area. However, it goes, it goes more depth than that. Because I know this is only the, what we're discussing about the topic. However, I do enjoy trees, nature, you know, trees is the life. And so I see a lot of you guys improving the town, and I can understand that and expand. However, I, it'd be nice to have a bit more where, because I, I have a feeling and thought that it would be more a city where there'd be a lot of towns and wouldn't be just as, it will, it will expand with inflation and also where more people will come in. And that's good, however, it is going to get crowded. So it goes more than just people, but also with the community as well. And, you know, it's unfortunate that trees, nature has to go because that's what I really like about McMenville. Because we have Rock Island, Fall Creeks Falls, you know, and rivers. And so when I heard about the kayak at the park, it, it made me upset because I wanted to know where it's going to be at. And I, I go there to exercise and everything. I just, it's unfortunate because I see people. And whenever I was young, up until this day, we would go underneath that building. And although, although there's not much redesigning, that, the bathroom, I will have a, I'm not a public restroom girl, lady, so. Nevertheless, I know you guys want to do business, and I understand that, I respect that. However, it's just empathy to show to us, like me, the community as well, and rethink about it. Because I know finances and people's thoughts, but also enjoy the things that I like to remember or other people that have grown up here in McMenville. And, you know, tearing down nature is, is, is unfortunate, it's just upsetting just because, like I said, it's very, it's, it's just life-giving to me. And then also just, just, I know you guys are the votes to do what you guys decide and just think about where you guys put the money into it, and, yeah, so.
Would you sign in on that sign-in sheet? And Mr. Knight, would you sign in?
There's no sign-in sheet.
I'll put it there. Jordan, did you pick it up?
I have so many papers, and I took the pen, too. Hold on.
Thank you, sir. Are we, are we okay to go? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It is 6:45. We will open a public hearing. We will open a public hearing to hear comments regarding the rezoning of a property on Wayne's Drive from I-1 Light Industrial to R3 High Density. If anyone wishes to address the board, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and sign in for me if you would.
My name is Jimin Oles. I live at 1656 Red Road. She's going to sign this for us. I've got some photos here. I'd like for you to see if it's, if it's okay.
That's okay, we'll share.
I bet I was mistaken, yeah, or they're county in order. And I'll, I'll go over them for you. And I also have a signed petition here from the residents of Red Road and Willow Way where this property joins. Okay, we, we in that area have at least two major concerns. And you're going to see from these photos that one of them is drainage. I've numbered them. These photos were taken on a Tuesday night about six weeks ago after storms rolled through, if you remember that. Probably that was the result of a two-inch rain, possibly. I didn't check to see exactly how much it was, but it was about a three-hour period, okay? And I don't know where this water comes from, I just know it comes from that direction, okay? And if you look at picture one, you can see about halfway up the drive and over to the left in that grass, that brown is all water. That's all water coming down toward Red Road. If you look at picture two, that's the ditch on the right of, of the driveway. And that flows down. In all fairness, it's not all from the similarly property or from that direction. Some of it is no doubt coming from the backside of the Willows subdivision. That spills into that ditch. But you can see from the driveway up through there that there's plenty of water coming from that direction somewhere. Okay, if you look at, of course, picture three, you're now looking at a four-foot tile that goes under the road, goes under Red Road there, goes down under, between me and my neighbor, underground. It's roughly four foot in diameter. You can see that that tile is maxed out right now. It's full from that rain, and it had done, quit raining when I took these pictures. It ran like that probably for at least, I would say, an hour or maybe two hours after the rain stopped. But that tile maxes out. And then, if you look at the, where that tile is, there's actually four to five other tiles pointing right at this tile where water comes through. So to make a long story short, this tile can't carry it at, at times. Okay, if you look at picture five, that water is beginning to back up toward the Willa drainage there. If you look at photograph five. And then if you look at photograph six, that's my driveway where, when it spills over the road, it washes my driveway out. I fixed the front of my driveway where I could get in and out, but I haven't fixed the backside yet. This happened probably early spring to late fall. That tile, that four-foot tile couldn't carry the water that's coming down through there now. And then it comes over the road, shoots right down my driveway. Mr. Garrett and the fellow that works with him come out, and they took a look at everything. I took him down on the backside of my property. I showed him where all of my gravel was.
So the, it didn't start to wash your driveway away until the last three years?
It, it happened after, once or twice after the Willows came in. But it takes, it takes a rain like we had, like I say, four to six weeks ago. It, it takes on average a two-inch rain in a, in a two or three-hour span or something like that, not a flash flood, mind you. This wasn't a flash flood we had six weeks ago, but it was a heavy rain. It was a heavy rain. Under normal conditions, there's no trouble, there's no problem, under just your small, steady rain. But the point is, you know, we can't count on that every time. And I know we can't control Mother Nature either, I understand that. But the photos, they, they show what's coming through right now. I don't believe, and I know a little bit about drainage and runoff, I don't believe there's no way that he can keep from adding to this problem. That's, that's my point. I just don't believe that he can design it to, to where he doesn't add to this problem. If it had rained, let's say another thirty minutes to an hour, then it would have come over the road. That's, that's what would have happened. But it's as if something has already changed, because I've never had three years in a row where my driveway was washed out. And I know it hasn't changed in the Willows. And like I say, I don't know where all this water's coming from, I just know the direction it's coming from, okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Nolan, can you, can you pull up that overhead shot with the zoning on it?
Yes, ma'am.
We've got four more minutes till the full board meeting starts. If there's anyone else who wishes to address?
Yes, please. Kil Milligan, I live at 1738 Red Road, and I'll, I've got my watch, I, I will do the spot-on for you.
You're okay.
My family has been on Red Road for sixty-one years. Dad moved us there in sixty-four, and I've got another neighbor here that's been there since seventy-one, and of course, Mr. Knowles too. But it's a good place to live, this is my home. I stayed with my dad till he passed, and then I'm there now. But to get into the story here, of course, we, we have some issues and some recent things and some that are more in the past, but nonetheless, Red Road has not changed. The community has changed. If you look at this as a gauge, swing Cadillac Lane and where Duck Hawk and Falcon Drive and that other area behind Duck Hawk, it's passed my mind, but nonetheless, and then the Willows, and then the proposed, the road has not changed itself. And if you look at it, it's the same road when I was riding the bike, it's been added two to three layers of asphalt. But I'm telling you this, since these other developments, it seems that people have become emboldened with their speed. Top Cadillac lanes, some brethren here can affirm to that, and it's like they're emboldened to go faster and faster. Cars, trucks, motorcycles, the supped up motorcycles, if you know what I'm saying. But also, we have fifty-three-foot semis that come down this road, believe it or not. And the road's only about twenty-one foot wide. I'm talking about Red Road. And I too have some photos, if you would like to look, if you don't, that's fine, too. The first two, in that order, reflects April the thirtieth of this year, where a fifty-three footer tried to turn right off Cadillac Lane, and he got hung up. If you'll see the fence posts laid down, it's, it's a wonder it hadn't punctured his tank. The third picture is the second truck on May the fourteenth, and he had to have a wrecker. He had to have a wrecker to remove his truck. And with my wife and the illness that she is, she's type one diabetic, if, if emergency, emergency service had tried to get there, they would have had to go all the way around to Silver Creek, but nonetheless, thankfully, nothing happened there. We've also got tractors pulling discs, they're pulling hay, mowers, they're pulling rakes. One came through two weeks ago pulling a double rake. He was having to stand up on his tractor because his hay fort was on the front and dodging our mailboxes. So these things happen, have been happening. We've had some serious accidents, and one of those is in your file there too, and I'm trying to hurry here. Foot traffic has increased from that one place, I think it's done, it is, just a moment, quail run with a lot of foot traffic, but no shoulder. They're usually in my yard, in their ditches. I'd assume them being in my yard, brethren, and still being run over, it worries me to death. It's concerning, so to say. And then last, I'll, I'll end. May the sixth, we had the planning, and I remember you very well. That afternoon, I went home with my wife, and she's in a wheelchair. We're in the back, back of the house, our favorite place, we heard three gunshots, pow, pow, pow. And I ran around front, made sure she was okay. Had three cars darting out of Falcon Drive. It was, guns were blazing, made sure my daughter was okay. My neighbors were in their, in their yard, working on their ditch. And I called Mr. Garrett's office the next morning to alert them of this, this drive-by, in addition to the things that I've talked about on the SIGs. And I'm sorry, but I didn't get a feedback on that, but that's what I've got. Red Road has changed, the road itself. I understand houses, I do. But at some point in time, it can't take no more. It, it just can't. And I appreciate your patience with me and understanding. Been out in the sun today, and I'm a little parched, so thank you, appreciate it. All of you.
We will close that public hearing. It is seven, it is seven o'clock. We will call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the McMinnville City Board of Mayor and Alderman. The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Deidre Dunlap, President.
Steve Harvey.
Here.
Carrie Morton.
Here.
Carrie Youngblood.
Here.
Mayor Chastain.
Present.
Sally Brock is absent.
Item two is consideration of minutes. There were two sets. Item two A is minutes from the June tenth regular session. Item two B is minutes from the June seventeenth called session. We will consider these concurrently. If there's no requests for additions, corrections, or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to dispense what they're reading and approve them as read.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Carrie Morton and a second by Ms. Rachel Kirby. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item three is recognition of visitors. If anyone wishes to address the board this evening, come to the podium, state your name for the record. Hearing none. Item four is recognition of employees. We have several department heads here this evening. If anyone wishes to offer any recognition, please come on up. Item five is communications, there are none. Item six is petitions, there are none. Item seven is unfinished business. Does any member of the board have any unfinished business this evening? Hearing none. Item eight is new business, any new business for the board? Hearing none. Item nine is resolutions, there are none. Item ten is ordinances. Item ten A is ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-one-zero, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-two-five, and ending June thirty, twenty-two-six. This is the second and final reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Carrie Morton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Deidre Dunlap. Any questions or discussion regarding the twenty-five to twenty-six budget?
I have some. I would, I brought it up last time, that our projected fund balance at the end of June of two thousand twenty-six is going to be around five point one million dollars. And that's significantly less than what we projected this year. It's going to be around seven. And so, I really think we need to do some things to try to save some money. There's, the, the last time I proposed a three percent step raise only and not the two percent cost of living raise, and I would, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget to give a three percent step raise and also to propose not purchasing the public safety vehicle that's in the budget and capital expenses. That's around forty-six thousand dollars, and you combine that with, with a hundred and eighty that we might save from, from not doing the step raise, it's about a quarter of a million dollars. And I just feel like that if we don't start doing some things now, we're going to, next year at this time, we're going to be, it's going to be tou, it's going to be really tough at that point. You know, you got seventy percent of our budget is payroll, and the only other really large items are capital expenses, there's several vehicles in, and that's just the one I could find that I think we could do the least without. And so, that's my motion to amend the budget.
Is there a motion for a budget amendment? Is there a second? Without a second, that motion will die too, for lack of any other questions or discussion, discussion regarding the budget. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Deidre Dunlap?
Aye.
Steve Harvey?
No.
Carrie Morton?
Yes.
Carrie Youngblood?
Yes.
Mayor Chastain?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'm not voting, and I, I wasn't there for roll call either.
I'm sorry. Rachel Kirby?
I thought you took a short one.
Yes, I'm going to vote yes, but I, I understand where Steve is going with his thoughts. I mean, there is going to come a day, and I think we're, we are definitely there where we need to talk about, can, can we, can we rescind, can we, can we step back? Because maybe we do need to have a discussion.
I mean, the budget is due next week.
But it's okay if it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we do have to talk about, how do you reconcile the overage? I mean, it's there. And it can bite us pretty quickly. We have to make this year work, but we have to make the next year's work as well. So I have struggled with all pieces and parts of this along the way, with Samantha laying different scenarios out for us and Steve working the numbers over here, and so.
Five million is at the bottom of where we really decided that we wanted to be. And we've gotten, the, the estimates on where, where we wind up are, are much more accurate. Now, it used to, we would always over budget, and everything came under and everything was okay. Sam's hitting it now to where, when she says we're going to have five million dollars left, we're going to have five million dollars left. So it's not, it's not like it used to be when we, when everything came in under budget almost every year. So that's something to consider as well.
Do you have anything, Sam, that you'd like to add?
The only, the only thing I could really add at this point is after I sent out the main financials today, we're estimating about ninety-three percent of expenditures for this year. So last year, we were around the ninety-six percent. So if we take ninety-three percent of those estimated expenditures, that would be a little bit of a, that's assuming we only spend ninety-three percent of our expenditures next year. And as we've been looking at, what Steve is discussing, that number used to be ten percent of the budget was being turned back in. So we've closed that gap, and that's a gamble. I mean, that's assuming we don't spend a hundred percent of our expenditures. But I do think that the day and time is coming to where we do approach that one hundred percent expenditure budget, and I think that is something to be mindful of. But if we looked at that total expenditure, instead of assuming we're going to spend a hundred percent of our expenditures next year, look at maybe ninety-five percent, that five percent there would be a little bit of addition on top of that five million that Steve's discussing. But outside of that, I think I've had conversations with everyone about some different ideas and things like that, and I appreciate that we're looking ahead at, at next year and not just this year. But the five million is where we are projected for next June, and I'm confident it will be that. A little bit above that, I wouldn't bank on a million dollars above that by any means, but a little bit above that, we should come in. I have specifics if you want to top in, I've got a binder full, so.
I think some of us have talked about doing a workshop too, where we could sit down and just look, look through some things. I mean, this, this budget is due, and I understand it doesn't, I don't know how that works, but I don't know at this point, if we're this far, I mean, I understand five billion dollars, and that's at the bottom. I got all that. But I do think, I think there will be things that we can see maybe in the next year, you know, maybe, maybe one of the departments, maybe they won't spend all of their money or they won't need something that they've asked for. But we can start looking at things like that for the next time. Maybe everybody don't get a raise next year. I mean, maybe that doesn't happen. But, you know, my feeling is at this point, I'm fine with what we have for this year. It's the mental length, different scenarios out for us, and Steve working the numbers over here, and so.
Five million is at the bottom of where we really decided that we wanted to be. And we've gotten, the estimates on where we wind up are much more accurate. Now, it used to, we would always over-budget. And everything came under and everything was okay. Sam's hitting it now to where, when she says we're going to have $5 million left, we're going to have $5 million left. So, it's not, it's not like it used to be when we, when everything came in under budget almost every year. So, that's something to consider as well.
Do you have anything, Sam, that you'd like to add?
The only, the only thing I could really add at this point is after I sent out the main financials today, we're estimating about 93% of expenditures for this year. So, last year we were around the 96%. So, if we take 93% of those estimated expenditures, that would be a little bit of a, that's assuming we only spend 93% of our expenditures next year. And as we've been looking at, what Steve is discussing, that number used to be 10% of the budget was being turned back in. So, we've closed that gap, and that's a gamble. I mean, that's assuming we don't spend 100% of our expenditures. But I do think that the day and time is coming to where we do approach that 100% expenditure budget. And I think that is something to be mindful of. But if we looked at that total expenditure, instead of assuming we're going to spend 100% of our expenditures next year, look at maybe 95%. That 5% there would be a little bit of addition on top of that 5 million that Steve's discussing. But outside of that, I think I've had conversations with everyone about some different ideas and things like that. And I appreciate that we're looking ahead at next year and not just this year. But the 5 million is where we are projected for next June, and I'm confident it will be that. A little bit above that, I wouldn't bank on a million dollars above that by any means, but a little bit above that, we should come in. I have specifics if you want to talk in. I've got a binder full, so.
I think some of us have talked about doing a workshop too, where we could sit down and just look through some things. I mean, this budget is due, and I understand it doesn't, I don't know how that works, but I don't know at this point, if we're this far. I mean, I understand $5 million, and that's at the bottom. I got all that. But I do think, I think there will be things that we can see maybe in the next year. You know, maybe, maybe one of the departments, maybe they won't spend all of their money, or they won't need something that they've asked for. But we can start looking at things like that for the next time. Maybe everybody don't get a raise next year. I mean, maybe that doesn't happen. But, you know, my feeling is at this point, I'm fine with what we have for this year.
But didn't we in the past, we could count on that 10% was the goal to be turned back in? And with the new budgeting, we wanted that, the numbers to be more exact. And we've done that, correct?
Yes, last year.
We don't want to have any padding in there was where we were headed.
And I'm really confident to say that the city administrator, all the department heads, we've done a really good job of cutting that out and not bringing you what is in that budget. I think you can look at the three-year actuels, like we discussed in the committee meetings. Look at what those bills are actually running. And, and see that there's not, we'll call it the fat in the budget. There's really not a lot of slow cuts to make. It's, you're going to, it's going to be a big impact. And at some point, there's going to be a level of service that is going to be cut out. But in, if I could speak to the capital projects and those big things, just because they're in this budget, doesn't mean it has to be, it still has to come to you to be voted on. So, if we get to a point in time, I can say, hey, guys, you know, the revenue isn't coming in, the sales tax revenue isn't coming in the way we had anticipated. We know that has plateaued off. I mean, that is a definite thing that has happened for the state and for our community. We could look at before a major purchase is made, say, I want a, I want a budget review before we vote to make this large purchase. And that would be a way to keep those expenditures in check with what you guys want that ending budget number to be. That's something we already do on a light basis, but on a more formal basis. We could absolutely have those conversations when a big purchase comes up. But in the budget, Steve and I have looked at it. The big projects are in there. And of course, personnel make 70%, a little less than 70%. That includes some unfilled positions. They're not filled today. It'll take some time to get those positions filled. So, that's going to work to your favor because the budget is assuming they're in the role starting on July the 1st, and they're not. There's a few of those that we've had it in. Other than that, I'm confident in saying there's not fat in this operating budget. There's no one place I could direct you.
So, we could go forward with what we have, knowing that as this year plays out, that we're going to need to start cutting back, tightening our bill.
That's an option.
And everyone else knowing that too.
That's an option, just something I'm bringing up. We've talked scenario A through Z, I think, at this point, and that's just something I wanted to bring forward.
And just to put it in perspective, I said this last time, but the last property tax increase we enacted would raise about an additional $500,000 a year, rough numbers. And that's about what a 5% pay raise costs. So, I mean, the point to me is that you can't tax your way out of this. I mean, you know, we gotta, we gotta do something.
I mean, I think Steve's concerns are definitely warranted. And I don't mean any offense, but the week before the budget's due, it's not the time to start trying to pare down the budget and things like that. I think we need to go into this next budget year and start making plans as soon as possible, rather than waiting till spring of 2026 to start working on the budget. So, kind of like everybody else has said.
Well, the changes I'm proposing could be, I mean, one more vote and we would pass it at the next meeting, if I'm not mistaken. I mean.
We'd need a 10-day notice in the newspaper for that public hearing. But outside of that, that 10 days is the only limit that you have on scheduling a meeting or the second vote.
I don't want to affect the level of service that we're providing to the citizens. And I think that the expenditure, like you said, like there's not, like I've looked at it, there's just nowhere to cut. The, you know, the payroll is a lot of our expense, but the value is there, and I think we have to support them. So, I don't support cutting that personally. So, I will stick with my yes vote.
I only have one no, Steve.
I mean, I haven't, I haven't, I said yes.
You said yes.
Okay. But then I said.
Never mind. You want to keep your yes?
Well, it would take unanimous approval from all the other board members to change the vote anyway.
All right, motion passes. Item 10B is ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville to amend Title III of the McMinnville Municipal Code Regarding Municipal Court Costs. And to express when the ordinance becomes effective, this is the second and final reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion by Ms. Carrie Morton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Deidre Dunlap. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Deidre Dunlap?
Aye.
Steve Harvey?
Yes.
Rachel Kirby?
Yes.
Carrie Morton?
Yes.
Carrie Youngblood?
Yes.
Mayor Chastain?
Aye, motion passes. Item 10C is ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville to amend ordinance number 2024-15 to adopt a new public notice and agenda policy to set the time when the ordinance becomes effective. This is the second and final reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Deidre Dunlap.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rachel Kirby. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Deidre Dunlap?
Aye.
Steve Harvey?
Yes.
Rachel Kirby?
Yes.
Carrie Morton?
Yes.
Carrie Youngblood?
Yes.
Mayor Chastain?
Aye, motion passes. Item 10D, ordinance number 2025-13, will not be considered. The owner of this property wished to remove the consideration for rezoning. Item 10E is ordinance number 2025-14, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville to deny the rezoning classification of a property located at Belmont Drive from I-1 to R-3. And to express the time when the resolution becomes effective, this is the first reading. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
No motion by Ms. Carrie Morton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Steve Harvey. Any questions or discussion?
Actually, I do have a question. What was the rationale in regards to the denial?
And so, with it, looking at it, it doesn't, would not conform with the master plan. There's no other R-3 in the area.
That's what I was saying.
All those factors, this is what made staff recommend not approving it. And then the planning commission, the planning commission was a 3 to 2 vote, but ultimately did recommend not to approve the result.
Okay.
I got, I got two questions, or the same question, but about two different things. Is it true that you cannot, because this is coming up in everything that we're looking at about drainage, that you cannot deny, permit, or we cannot turn down a zoning change on the basis of drainage? Is that true?
Yes, the board's got a little leeway there. With the drainage, I think the main thing to consider is with stormwater, they would have to design it where the, either the volume or velocity could increase to downstream properties. So, they would not be able to come in and do that development and increase any stormwater that is flowing through that area. So, ultimately, as I said, the board had some discretion there. I would look at that, like I said, the stormwaters are addressed to letter date, but they cannot increase the amount or the velocity of that for any, any development. I mean, that's.
But the fact that there's already a problem anyway, and then it could potentially become worse, does that, I mean, are we, on that basis, can we deny zoning change?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's different than community development when you're at a permit?
Yeah. And like I said again, that it can't increase. So, I mean, existing issues, I can understand if there's existing issues, and that we could look at in addressing that. But they can't increase to those existing issues with any development.
But would this one be, have been spot zoning, since it's not? I mean, it would have been.
This would, this could, yeah, this particular one in Belmont could fall under. There's no other R-3 in the area. It's all industrial. There's a little bit of commercial, and the rest is R-4 in there. So, it could be classified on that.
Okay.
And as stated by some of the people at the public hearing, it pretty much is a swamp land, so it's not real high for development regardless of its industrial.
Yeah, that, it just doesn't, it just doesn't fit, so, okay. All right, any further questions or discussion? And again, this does say to deny, so. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Deidre Dunlap?
Aye.
Steve Harvey?
Yes.
Rachel Kirby?
Yes.
Carrie Morton?
Yes.
Carrie Youngblood?
Yes.
Mayor Chastain?
Aye, motion passes. Item 10F is ordinance number 2025-15, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville to rezone classification of property located at 209 Waynes Drive from R-1 Low Density to R-3 High Density. And to express the time when the ordinance becomes effective. This is the first reading. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion so we can discuss it.
Okay. No motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. My first question about this one is, again, what is the developer wanting to do here?
So, they are planning, we have two representative things come up. They're wanting to do single-family detached dwellings. The R-3 allows for an increase in lots. So, it'll, it'll pretty much mimic what is, would be right above Waynes Drive.
Okay.
If, only if you can bring that zoning map back up, which is kind of.
Single-family dwelling at what?
So, it's going to be single-family detached dwellings. So, right there along Willow Way, right up to the north, it's going to be kind of mimicking those lot sizes and those detached dwellings. And they do have, I don't know if you can, I meant to include this and did not, but this, I think just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand what a single-family detached dwelling is. What is that?
It's just a single-family home. Just a standard single-family home. It's just detached instead of attached. So, this will kind of show the base concept plan on it.
So, why wouldn't that be a R-6?
R-3 allows for a little bit smaller of lots, and the proposal is going to be kind of a mixture on that. So, they're not looking to go to R-6. They were just looking to go to R-3 to mimic the development that's currently north of there.
But R-3 allows multifamily also.
It does. That's not being what's proposed, but it does allow that.
So, the minimum lot size of an R-6 is 70?
10,000 square feet.
It's 10,000.
And you have a wider lot width requirement as well. So, like, R-1 is 75 feet minimum width at the building line, R-6 is 80 feet. And so, while you can do a smaller lot, you have to stretch that lot width out.
So, is a R-6 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, R-6 is 10,000.
So, this is half of an R-6.
R-2 minimum for a single-family dwelling is 7,500 square feet. And they can discuss more on the short.
Sean, at the current zoning, the amount of houses that could fit on that lot would be roughly how many?
R-1, I'd have to measure it out, and it depends on the layout.
Okay. And currently?
You're basically about doubling, so you're cutting down in half if you go 7,500.
And so, what's the number of housing units that are going to be on this proposed?
59.
59.
What was the recommendation by staff?
Staff recommends approval would be in accordance with the master plan. That area is for mixed residential and development. Planning commission did make a recommendation for approval on it as well.
So, those houses above it are what?
R-3.
R-3?
Yeah.
And the R-1s?
And they just are planning on essentially mimicking that development, or the house styles or anything of that nature. But the lot sizes and the variation, things of those nature.
The R-1s run this way on Red Road? Because aren't there R-1s touching this property as well?
There's R-1s touching the property as well.
Where does?
So, anything of the light color is all R-1. The darker yellow was R-3.
Nice.
So, Falcon Drive and Duck Hawk Drive are R-1?
Yes.
And Willow Way is R-3?
Yeah. And that was rezoned some time ago. I don't remember exactly when that was, but that guy zoned R-3.
Falcon and Duck Hawk are R-2.
They're?
Oh, yes, they are R-2, yeah.
They're R-2.
Well, it's lighter green than Willow Way is.
These are R-3.
Okay, so like, the lemon lime is R what?
Lemon lime. This one?
So, it's R-2, R-3, then R-1?
Yep. And then the darker down there, it could be R-4. Red's commercial, all the purple is industrial.
Stacked up, it's R-2, R-3, R-1. The white, the white-ish is R-1. Okay, I see, in the blue outline that was there.
So, this would all be all R-1. R-3, 2, all that.
Can we talk to the design a little bit?
Yeah, if you will.
If it'll help, so my name is Alan Jones, it's Dunk Creek Consulting, and I'm here on behalf of Legacy South. So, you know, as far as the lot sizes, so that the homes that are currently on Willow Way are kind of in that 75 to 8,500 square foot range. And so, we were kind of intentional in our design, and hopefully it's made up to your desk there. But along, along the lots that are backing up to Willow Way and also on the perimeter on the south side of the lot, we're proposing larger lots that are 7,500 square feet in size. As a way to kind of match the existing single-family neighborhood that's already existing to the north. And then on the interior is where, is where we're needing that, or requesting that R-3 zone, just have a little bit smaller lot size for a 6,000 square foot house. And the request and the reason for that is to be able to provide a mix of housing sizes. Because, you know, if we came through with an R-1 development, you know, we might be in that 45 to 50, the 50 lot range. But all your homes with that, with the price of land today is going to jack all those house sizes up, and the cost of those homes is going to go up. Which really starts to outprice this market. So, what Legacy South through Vanderbilt Homes is they're trying to bring a more affordable, a right-sized house to this, to your community. So, the house sizes are going to be ranging between 11, 1200 square feet up to 15, 1600 square feet. The larger homes kind of on the outside of the perimeter and the smaller homes in the middle. So, that's going to provide a range of price options, kind of that low to mid 200 range. Instead of the national average in the southeast right now in Tennessee, we're seeing 350, 400.
So, I know right now, this is obviously just into planning phases, but I got to ask, especially with all the other people here, what plans will be in place for stormwater mitigation?
Great question. So, we, I mean, so, you know, once, if this moves forward, you know, we'll go into the preliminary plat phase, which will require stormwater plans, grading plans. There's also going to be an A-RAP that's going to be required for this, for the stream improvements or the stream crossing. Because Wayne Strive is going to get, you know, reworked and widened and put the appropriate size, you know, still change tile underneath it. You know, if you look at, you know, I looked at the pictures that he shared with me, which I thank him for showing those. You know, if you look at the water that's going on the Red Road, and I was asking Sean, you know, is there any history of the water actually getting over Red Road? And, you know, yes, the pipe size is maxed during, during stormwater events. But if the water's not going over the road, then that pipe's probably pretty close to the right size for some of these larger storm events. If water is leaving, is currently going over the road, then yeah, we're having an issue with that, with that pipe size. I don't know what the, I haven't, I have not, you know, investigated and looked at all the stormwater for the entire drainage basin. But as, as he mentioned earlier, with any grading permit, that's going to be submitted to city of McMinnville and also to TDEC. The engineers have to prove through all the calculations that the existing pre, the way the water leaves the site now, both in volume and velocity, cannot increase post-construction. If you look at the total property, it's roughly 15, I think 15.9 acres. And you look at the average house size of 1,400 square feet, assume 18 by 25 driveway, and about, you know, 7,800 or 78,000 square feet for roadway. Look at all the impervious area, it's only about 25 to 27% of the total area. And also on top of that, there's a ridge that kind of runs to the middle of the property. So, only half of this property is really draining toward Red Road, the other half is draining. Unless, if you look at the plan, there's another stormwater pond planned on the, on the west side of the property. So, that really got drained, it's just kind of splitting the property on both directions. But I can guarantee that TDEC or the city won't approve anything if the calculations don't pan out.
Have you purchased this property?
It is under contract pending rezoning.
Paying rezoning?
Yes.
Did you look into the R-6?
They looked at the R-6. The, what it comes down to is R-6 with that 10,000 square foot lot size, that's going to drive up your larger houses to make, to make the dollars work for what the land costs today to develop. With the building costs we have today, with land costs we have, and all, and everything that's involved in getting houses on the market, that's going to drive your house sizes, you know. That 10,000 square foot lot's probably going to push you a 22 to 2400 square foot house. And that just continues to drive that cost up. And so, and able to make the performance work for, for Legacy South and Vanderbilt Homes, you know, we're looking at trying to get a variable of house sizes to bring up a market house that is affordable for this community.
And so, it can spin off that from affordability or attainability standpoint.
Well, sure.
If that, if that cost is spread out amongst the various house sizes and more lots, then the product can remain the same and keep those prices lower, rather than driving them up. Because you're still going to have the same amount of roads, you're still going to have the same amount of sewer lines, water lines. All those factors are going to be the same if it's R-1 or this. But if it's spread across multiple more lots, then that can help drive down that price and get more into that affordable or attainable housing.
Was there a discussion at the planning commission? And I guess I want to know what the vote was.
So, the vote at planning commission was 4 to 1. We also had a community meeting prior to planning commission. meeting prior to planning commission as well. So we've had, we had a, we engaged the community for a meeting prior to planning commission as well, just to hear, and the feedback we got was stormwater and traffic, that what you've heard today as well.
Well, there's many as much as anything as a multifamily. I mean, I know that, I know this is your proposal, but, you know, say you bought the property and somebody came and bought it from you, then they could stick apartments on there, and there wouldn't be nothing anybody could do about it.
Do the apartments require a special use permit in R-3?
No, probably, so it's a permitted use.
I mean, if it's any comfort, Reagan Smith is the engineer of record for this project, and they're pretty much ready to hit the submit button on the preliminary plat if this moves forward. So they've, they've already invested a lot of money in getting the engineering drawings moving forward with, you know, to show confidence that this is what they want to do. And Legacy South and Bannerbilt Homes, they're just, they're single, well, Bannerbilt Homes are a single-family home builder.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not in the apartment business.
I don't doubt your intentions, I just, you know, things happen.
And unfortunately, I don't think you can do conditional zoning in...
No, no, we don't have that luxury. Chattanooga, a few other places in Tennessee, we're granted that.
Not till Memphis, yeah.
Way back when from the state, but we do not have that, so. Essentially, we're saying with conditional zoning, that certain cities have the privilege, you can say, okay, we'll rezone this, but only if you're going to do X, Y, Z, or you can't do X, Y, Z.
Right.
McMinnville, we don't have that special privilege, so we cannot engage in that.
Rachel, on your question, I'm on the planning commission, so I'll talk about why I chose to vote the way I did on the planning commission and kind of the discussion on there. I think that I have made it pretty well-known at this point, that I think stormwater is an issue in this city that I want to address separately. I don't think that rezoning, I don't think the decision to rezone or not rezone this is going to fix the systemic problem that we have throughout the city. Like, I understand that it might affect one or two, but I think that overall, I would like to make the city have, you know, I want the city to have a better stormwater plan. And so I think that's a separate vote, and I think that's something that I hope that we're all looking towards voting for, because it's not just here. Eighty percent of the meetings that I've been to since I was elected, someone has brought up stormwater as an issue. But we have to balance it with the fact that it's consistent with the neighborhood next door, or next to it. It's an R-3 as well, and then R-2 next to it, I mean, it is consistent with that. I understand that you're coming into an R-1 area, but it's not spot zoning, and I think affordable housing has to be addressed in this area, I mean, in the city as well. And so it does hit at a, at a middle range, you know, obviously not the lowest, but, you know, not the highest as either, and so I think that's what went into our decision. Did y'all talk about apartment buildings, or the fact that they're part of, even though it is touching an R-3, the other side is all R-1? Right. No, I mean, it was not brought up, I mean, yes, obviously, what they're asking for, R-3 does allow for apartment buildings, but it wasn't considered as to whether that they would pull out later on, but that is a consideration.
May I add also, just to the conversation of like, so my background with land planning and engineering as well, at least in my opinion, I do understand your point of like, we're not apartments, that's, at most, we're going to be as townhomes, that's, we don't ever get in the apartment game, but from my history of looking at cities and like various city planning studies that we've done as well, I don't, I don't view this site as really desirable for apartments, just based on the area. I mean, we talked to a lot of apartment builders, because we look at large land as well, and this isn't really the area that apartments really want to go, that's just my, my opinion, but when I look at this, I don't, I've never looked at apartments in this kind of setting in a city before, it just doesn't really fit the area. And they look at that, and it's, same thing as us as well, is that sales, you got to find somebody to buy it or rent it, and I just don't think that the market fits here. And looking at the surrounding area, I mean, it's all single-family housing, and I think that's for a reason, regardless of size. So for, just my, my opinion, but that's just how I view it.
You know, and the property to the south, if my understanding is this assisted living, I think it's an assisted living property, so, you know, this is a good transitional use anyways of having single-family homes. And then the existing R-1 homes that are on Red Road, we're buffering that, I mean, there's a natural buffer with that stream that's already there, so, you know, there's going to be a minimum of a thirty-foot buffer on both sides of that stream, plus we don't even have any homes until you get further into the site. So we're, I mean, we're pretty intentional in this design to buffer the R-1, and where we do touch R-1, we have, or even the existing R-3 neighborhood to the north, we've got the larger lot sizes on the perimeter to match the existing place type that's there.
Any further questions or discussion?
Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Deidre Dunlap?
Aye.
Pardon?
Aye.
Steve Harvey?
No.
Rachel Kirby?
No.
Carrie Morton?
No.
Carol Youngblood?
Yes.
Mayor Chastain?
Yes. I guess, motion fails. That is the first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is departmental reports. We have several department heads here this evening, if anyone wishes to give any updates, come on up. Ms. Wayne, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Pardon?
No.
If there's nothing else to come before the board, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.